So we like the promotion.
The holiday promotion, I think is fantastic, I love it.
Is it something that you're already in the budget for?
Yeah.
Sure can be, it's been.
I, I believe it is, yeah.
Yes, it's, uh. Yes.
Just asking.
Yeah.
We're working on it for it. It's not on the line either, but it's.
We need to work on expanding over the next year, just to.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Thank you much.
Thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
Thank you for all that you do for.
Very interesting tax situation.
Okay.
Wait till I'm away.
Okay, this is, this is my thing I put on the agenda. Um, I believe that we need to have a public hearing on the going forward of the school, school street sidewalk project. And like to have it before maybe five o'clock before the select board meeting. Kind of like to have it advertised and maybe we should have it in, not next meeting, because I think we might do a workshop the next meeting, but the following meeting, whatever date that is. So, give it a chance to have it out there that we're gonna, we want the town to kind of talk about whether it's it's September eleventh. Look at that.
Whether the town was gonna have that.
Yeah, I, the problem is the engineering came in just under two hundred thousand dollars. Our, our match is twenty, twenty percent, so that's forty thousand dollars. And I know if we just asked Dicky what he could do with forty thousand dollars, I'm pretty sure he could give us just a few little cement square sidewalk thing, little bit at a time. I just think it's outrageous and then.
That's where it starts.
Twenty, and, and that's engineering, it will be done by twenty, tw- twenty twenty seven. And then it goes up to bid, what's it, a million and a half? And we're on it, we're talking about a town road. This is not a state road. So we have control over that and it doesn't have to be David's payment way, this is on federal grant, we're doing ourselves. So I think, in retrospect, and, and thank you for being back on the board, Dan, because we went, we inherited the Washington Street Sidewalk Project when we got on board twenty fourteen.
And we're into lesson.
And we were in the lesson, because when we finally thought about backing out, we already had seventy thousand dollars into it, which DOT use, uses their legal department and they, they bill our grant when they're working. And I already called and I said, okay, what are we in this grant for? It's like forty-five hundred dollars. And that's like, not much to get out of it.
My two cents on that is I'm, I'm infamous to say, we should take care of what we have before we buy something shiny new. And I agree that there's something we can do with that money elsewhere, with stuff that already needs attention, such as one sidewalk, we've talked about, right there.
I have a question.
But it has to be a town decision.
I agree with what you said, Carol. I also want to know that regarding public hearings, is there a requirement for attendees at a public hearing?
No, that, well, we would have to go to special town meeting to vote on withdrawing from the grant.
That has a.
That has.
That has a twenty-five person.
Alright.
But I think we should have a public hearing and then a special town meeting.
I, I'm asking because I attended a planning board meeting that had started with a public hearing that was attended by three members of the public.
There's no, to my knowledge, there's no requirement for a public hearing.
Okay, but when you only have three members of the public, there's not much traction that extends.
It's unfortunate, we have a lot of applicant people. They just don't want to be involved, they don't care, I don't know why.
Or they think we're doing a good job.
Oh, that's it, or they think we're taking a good job.
They can handle it.
Thank you, Mark, I like that positive twist. That's very good.
Can you hold a meeting remote?
Pardon me?
Could you hold a meeting remote?
Oh, the only time we were able to hold a meeting remote was during, during COVID. We can't do meetings.
There's no way to track the attendance.
In a statement of the law. We were allowed during COVID to do that. We have tax-acquired property, Ruby. So there's no, I don't think we need a mo- well, I wouldn't mind having a motion that we set a date for
September eleventh.
September eleventh. At five. I'll s- I'll make a motion that we hold that public hearing. All in favor?
This is a public hearing about the sidewalk.
Yes, school street sidewalk.
Maybe the sidewalks in general.
And all sidewalks, right.
Much needed.
School street, what can we do with that and what do we do with sidewalks?
I just want to say, like, the sidewalks that Dicky and the crew did down here on the corner came off fabulous.
I know.
I mean, it looks great.
It's so good. Across the Rockford Park, lovely, that's why I think that we could just, we could do a better job with our sidewalks, because we were doing them ourselves. But then it's a, but then it's a personnel issue that was a whole nother.
Right.
We're getting a whole nother discussion.
From the page, now we can do our own sidewalks.
Right. We might need extra people to help us, so.
Right, we, we probably need another person to accomplish that, you know, or a part-time.
You had a work detail, didn't you, Dicky, from the?
We used the, uh, the, the O.C., the crews from Baxavae, yes.
That's excellent.
Asking a question of those that have been here longer. And I know you said five o'clock for the time of the public meeting, but and I know that most people don't go. And could it be that, in this case, it's five o'clock and they're not even hardly home yet?
Possible.
I mean, should we, should we?
We could have the public, we could, we could raise the public hearing as being before the select board meeting starts and start the public hearing at six and have the select board meeting to follow, we could do that way.
Or, or I was thinking, we do our select board meeting at six and be done by seven and do the public hearing at seven, either way, if we have the tight agenda and.
Six.
It just allows.
Have the hearing at six to the select board to follow, the meeting after.
Can you, can you join, uh, issues on a public hearing? Because the planning board had a failure during annual town meeting of the acceptance of the fee schedule.
I don't want to mix it right now.
Okay, I understand.
We have, we have enough to talk about with just sidewalks. But yes, that, that, that needs to be readdressed.
And maybe, and maybe if, after the public hearing on sidewalks, if we have to do a special town meeting to address the sidewalks, we could do something about the building, at that meeting, play a part on the head.
Yes, add an article. Yes. To re, to re, uh.
Absolutely.
We consider, we consider the article.
Consider, right, right.
Okay, very good.
So. How did you end this thing?
Tax-acquired property, what?
Well, that's it. One dollar.
Six o'clock, September eleventh. And so the select board meeting to follow after, public hearing.
So our hearing is at six and then the select board.
Yes, so see how long the public hearing goes.
We might, might have people at the same time.
Yeah, we might have people.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Maybe they'll stick to our, our one more day.
It's been said before, Mark, the timing, it's dinner time.
This is my Cinderella stage, so I'll get the bag of the egg swat when we're done.
We might be the latter.
Yeah.
To do that.
Very good. With tax-acquired property?
So we do have four properties that were proposed on, uh, in the middle of April. Two of them are, um, have to go to legal. There's a few issues concerning the new process of selling and disposing of tax-acquired properties.
Because there's people living, I think it only pertains to people who are living in the house, right?
But there are people living.
All that, so that's why it's going to legal.
Yeah. And so the top two are the two.
Are just land?
Uh, that are just lands.
And that shouldn't apply.
And so. So, um, so we have tax-acquired, those top two pages there, they are just lands, no buildings or structures on either one. But you guys have to make a motion to start the new process where we have to address these.
Where, where, where is this located? Is this in April, I mean, where's the actual?
It's Kaufman's Back Road.
So property on Kaufman's Back Road, that, oh, okay. So Kaufman's, one's on Kaufman's Back Road, one's on North Shore Road. I'm not sure where that is, is that off Northwoodback Road? It probably.
Dicky, which one's off the road?
Probably.
It's off Northwoodback, but I'm not sure. It's, uh.
Can I steal a camera?
No, it's way, it's way over the center. It's almost across from Wayne's Road Farm.
Ah.
Going that way.
It is?
Yeah.
So, we don't necessarily know where they are, but do you want to start with the?
The, pieces of land and the way the new process works, um, they have to be listed with a real estate agent for, uh, six months minimum at the moment.
We can't put it out ourselves?
We cannot put it out to bid, that's, that's.
Anymore?
That's gone.
Oh, okay.
So now it has to be sold through, we don't, uh, we can only keep what is owed to us, any, um, remaining money. You have to sell it at fair, fair market value as well, you can't just list it as.
Including, uh, including the, uh, the, the land?
Yep.
I just can't imagine that ever go past. That's what they do.
No more options, there's no more bids. If it doesn't sell in twelve months with the real estate agents, then you may choose to put it out to bid, but it has to be listed for at least six months.
Fair market value.
Fair market value of the property.
How many lots are there? Are they acres and acres or anything? I just wondered what it's gonna happen to.
I mean, it sounds like it is what it is, so.
Yeah, so I want to be clear about what you're saying, that the big change is now a foreclosure property for, for failure to pay taxes goes to a realtor first. And after all debts are satisfied from the sale money.
Yep.
The owners get the balance.
Yep. Correct, courses and realtors get, get commissions.
Yeah, realtors get commission out of their money, but once ours, our deal is settled, that money goes back to your company.
Okay.
Well, I think that's.
No. Nobody's gonna sell anything.
So is there a time period where people have to step up, like the water company, the electric companies, uh, cable and say, we're owed money on this?
Well, we're not.
I know you're not.
We only, uh.
I'm asking you, I'm asking you.
That's their lien problem. And that, and then when you sell it to a realtor.
That I'm not sure about at all. This is just about tax-acquired properties.
I, I can, I can, I can answer that, Ruby.
So.
If they have put a legal lien on the property and it goes to close legally, then all liens have to be satisfied before they, the new process.
So they have to be, they have to be searched every day.
Yes, but that's not our problem, because we're only worried about our liens.
So Ruby, I don't want to put you on the spot, but could you explain to everybody online, I noticed some ambiguity of the town meeting last week, the timeline in which notices go out and liens go out and, um, and the, and the reason I, yeah, the reason I say that is I looked at, I think, four pages of outstanding unpaid taxes right now. So can you just explain to people what the timeline is and, and like what they need to know?
Maybe we can get some of these people to pay their taxes on time?
So.
That did change too, because it, like, that came along, but aggressive.
I mean, there was, there was an extensive list.
So, and the way that it has always been at the state required process is from the date of commitment. And it can be no sooner than eight months past the date of commitment in when the taxes are due.
Well, let's say it's due, let's say, yeah, so let's say their first bills due June.
Because we split it too.
Give an example. It's due May thirty-first.
Okay, May thirty-first.
And then the second one's due December thirty-first.
No, that's the first payment.
Yeah, it's December thirty-first and May, maybe. Oh, sorry. December thirty-first and then May.
So December thirty-first, the first payment is due.
Yeah.
So eight months after from that first due date that those taxes have not been paid.
To August.
Yep. No. The commitment date, yes, sorry.
Yep.
Um, I have eight months that I can start the lien process, but I can do it no later than twelve months from the commitment date.
So that four-month window.
So I can't, yeah, I can't start it.
So twelve months would be December thirty-first, so you can't do it bad.
Eight months before the first payment is missed, and, but I have to do it within twelve months of the commitment date.
Which is December thirty-first.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Well, the commitment date was August.
So you have from August and December to start it.
What is used to commit the date?
The commitment date is the date that the assessments of the properties are committed to me to collect the taxes on it.
So it's the tax due date.
Nope, the commitment date is different than the tax date.
Oh, okay, so that's.
So the commitment date last year was, I believe, August fifteenth, might have been the sixteenth, so don't go beyond that.
Is that, can I just clarify, because that all happens after the town meeting and then our assessor looks at what's. We're waiting for the best commitment right now. And he makes the assessment.
So you're talking about the commitment that goes online?
Yep, the tax commitment and when they are finalized, the, the assessor will be like, yes, these are true and accurate. This is the amount of money that you have to collect from each taxpayer for their properties. That's the commitment date, then the, they're committed to the, what we call the book, meaning that I can then start collecting, or we set the date, so I have to get them printed and mailed to the taxpayers so that they have enough time before the first tax payment is due.
And you've got four pages of that right now, that you're starting to monitor and?
Of people that have not paid yet.
So this is a faster process to work out in the past?
No, if, what changed a bit is Jim always did the commitments in October. So his commitments were usually done in the middle of October. Jackie committed two months earlier than him, so that's why it feels everything is very rushed. But it's, I have to go from the commitment date, not the due date.
That's very good, well, well explained.
So I had to do it before, I had to put the liens on before the one-year mark of the commitment date, which was August fifteenth.
Which is like tomorrow.
Yes.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Right, tomorrow, so that's why you've been doing it.
So that's why, and if I had missed that due date, we would not have been able to collect taxes.
Oh, we wouldn't have been able to.
On the twenty twenty third taxes, we wouldn't have been able to get any properties. We wouldn't have been able to get any of the, uh, interests or anything, it would be done.
Well, that'll know why you're so busy.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you very much.
I just, I know there's maybe a.
I, I understand.
I had not, I had not.
And I know it, it feels like that for everybody, because Jim had always done them in October.
In October, right.
And he worked here for like twenty years almost, so like people were very used to it being in October, but where Jackie had committed in August, two months earlier than Jim usually does, that's why everything felt different.
I'm in hopes to help with that issue under other business.
Okay.
To help clear out some of the stuff that needs to go away.
Ruby, thanks for stalling out.
So, so we, should we make a motion to go ahead with tax-acquired property and go through the process? Because.
Start the process in two pieces of land?
Start the process, you made a motion for that before. And the two, you're gonna go to the lawyers?
We have to go through the lawyers, because those are occupied, um, by tenants.
Silly question, how do we choose a realtor?
We have to choose a realtor that is familiar with this market. We can, um, take it up to three realtors, um, for one of them to accept it, but it has to be somebody that's familiar with our area markets.
Thank God you've got plenty of real.
Do we, George, do we?
I know, right?
Can we put it out to bid to realtors and see what percentage?
Yeah, we, I have to send, uh, and speak to at least three realtors in the area.
And, and what, how would we do the value?
Yeah.
And that comes backed up? When you all decide?
Once.
Well, they might have different market values. They're gonna.
Market value is a market value.
So we still need a motion to start the process.
Brokers' level all varies.
On the two properties.
Two, so I make a motion to start the process on the two.
Oh, sorry, there's four acquired properties.
Two on the land, two on.
Two, two are holding for.
And two are.
Yep.
Second, we're second, all in favor? Dicky, road manager update.
A C O.
No.
Number four.
Little fluke. Road manager update.
I don't even have it on here.
I don't even have mine. Number four.
Is it me or not?
Speak quick.
Yeah, yeah, take your time.
Do that thing.
Hurry up and quit.
Okay, over the weekend, we had two or three complaints that, well, it was actually by the end of the week that I was off. Um, down on Main Street, in the intersection of Pleasant, how it goes across there, I guess there was a bicyclist that was pretty near hit by cars not being able to see what's coming up and down the hills, encroached up into the road, I guess it was really close. So today, we went down and we, we trimmed that all back and down over the hill completely to Water Street.
Okay.
Back into the, uh, property line.
Those, those bushes.
Yes. So, and then I did get a phone call from the homeowner saying that, you know, she liked the job that it was done, but everybody, everybody wants a phone call before something's done, that this happened or that happened. I mean, and I explained to her that exactly what was going on, she understood and whatnot, she was happy that it was done, but you know, it's to the point, by the time that, we come here and do this at least once a month, if not twice, every month we do this, and we explain what we're doing, why we're doing it, when we're gonna be doing it, so that the people in the public that don't come to the meetings anymore can listen and understand what's going on. Because I've had complaints and talks with citizens that think that the town office ought to be calling everybody and letting them know that we're gonna be doing work, that we ought to be notifying everybody that we're gonna be doing work. And that it's to the point that the only work that we're doing is within the right-of-way of the town. We're not, we're not on, we're not on people's private property conducting work. We're on, we're out, within either town, town-owned land, or within the right-of-way of the town, doing the work that we're doing.
It's time consuming.
So, and it is, and it's, it is time consuming.
I mean, it's only three of you.
Does it get posted? I mean, just, I, I agree, you can't be calling, because someone's gonna say, why are we half a mile down?
I mean, Dan, it's to the point that we, we try.
If it's a big job, if something really is important going on and it's gonna interfere with something, we try to. Now, for instance, um, we just thought our striker that I wanted to, we're gonna, we are gonna tackle the lines down on Front Street. Um, I've got the dimensions, I've gotta go through the process of setting it up, measuring it out, and it's gonna be to the point that we are gonna have to notify, we're gonna have to post it, because it's to the point that I don't want overnight parking on Front Street, we're gonna have to do this in the night. So it's gonna be to the point, we're gonna have to give two or three days' notice so that Water Street's clear one night, we'll do Front Street.
Are you just doing the parking boxes at it?
Yes.
And, and what about the, the crosswalks?
That, we can, we, we could probably do them during the day, but the parking, the parking stalls has got to be done.
Does it have to be done in the high of the tourist season? This is our busiest month, I mean, that's like, it probably needs to be done after Labor Day.
What's that?
Pain.
Any of it?
I mean, it's, there's nowhere for anybody to go, I mean, there's no parking as it is and it, and August is, we're slammed with storms.
You have to have certain temperatures too for the paint.
I'm gonna say, I mean, we're gonna be doing this in the night, so, well, I mean, it's just a.
But then you gotta get every, and there's like, like Go Hills and places, they don't even, they don't, they don't have any park.
I think the, I think their point is trying to get the street empty at night now would be a different, uh.
Extremely difficult.
Yeah, it's, uh, not the best.
You would have to put every single notch and every single door and, and that would really mess up.
I mean, I, that's totally up to you guys, if you don't wanna wait on it.
I think we should wait, because.
We'll wait on it, but.
There are some older people that, that, that need, that need to have their cars near where their hotels are and they need to help.
Okay, so I can do it.
Well, we're not done yet, I mean, I might have liked having done that one, this is, we're not, as a group, deciding that yet.
No, we're talking about.
But so, are you making certain sized spaces, or are you just painting a white line that they have to stay inside of?
No, we, we'll be putting actual sized stalls in there.
So, let me, I went through this. And I found that free-range parking, as I call it, by having a white line that they park inside of, because not all, not all cars are nineteen feet long.
Absolutely.
And that's, I think, the size of, of what the state has for a standard.
Yes.
So if you have a fifteen-foot Prius, but you have a crew cab, another vehicle, they're not gonna, each of those aren't gonna fit into the space.
Right.
As given. So, not that I would be in favor of just, as I call it, free-range parking inside of the white line.
Right.
That way you're not limiting a, a big one to a small space or a small one to a big space.
It, it's, and it's difficult, because you're, you're a hundred percent correct, I mean, no two vehicles are the same unless.
But they're a standard to the city.
Right, and that's the way it is, it's, it's, you know, eight and a half feet wide and it's twenty feet, some, and some will go to twenty-two feet, so.
So we've already marked, I mean, we already had lines, you're just redoing the lines you already marked out, aren't you?
There is no lines there, you gotta remember.
Lately gone?
That's brand new, that's brand new hot dog.
Oh, wow.
That's why I was in the process of wanting it done professionally, but everybody, everybody's busy.
And the cost.
Yeah, so.
I, I, I think we should wait, but it's just me.
I think if you could, if you knew a day that you were gonna do it, if you knew a day that we were gonna, I'm just talking out loud, again, so that, you know, because I understand you can't, you know, there's gonna be another time that somebody might like to have it done, you're busy doing something else. So I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, if there were a day certain that you thought you could do it, and somehow rather the businesses that have the lack of their own parking uh, could be informed to please have your pavement parked somewhere else that particular night, that way he can go about his business, do what he needs to do, rather than come back to it later in the year or next spring.
I mean, ideally, this isn't the time to be doing it, but it's to, you know, it needs to get done, it does need to get done, and it's to the point as we get going through September, we start putting, have to put winter sand up and we're gonna be doing the, the change orders, the monitoring and stuff.
I'm just suggesting we wait until after Labor Day. I, I know how hard it was to get people off Water Street when we had the marathon, because I worked on that committee for nine years.
I'm not just, I'm not disagreeing.
It was really hard to get Water Street clear.
I have a problem getting, I have a problem getting the roads clear during winter packing, so it's a process.
I wanted to go back to your earlier comments on, um, the, I call it yard work. Two months ago, those posts that you uncovered today were there. So all that you cut back today was new growth, I don't know how you'll ever keep up with that around the town. Has it ever been discussed that maybe the homeowners, the property owners manage the front of the yard? Uh, I mean, it might be a novel idea, I'm just saying, like, I just don't understand, in other municipalities, people.
My mode of sight is my property on Mid Ridge.
Yeah, people pick pride and clear their sidewalk and shovel it, and that was their responsibility, but are you gonna, because I mean, I have some landscaping, you can do too. I mean, I'm, I've got a couple that are growing in and it's town property.
I mean, every, if you stop and thought about every intersection there is in this town, the, here's, here's the problem. The problem that's going on in this town is everybody wants privacy. So they run to where they think that they own their, their land goes, and if it's a sidewalk, it's to the backside of the sidewalk. And they want to plant rose bushes or something or whatever. And what happens is, is once it starts to grow and bloom and spread out, it's halfway along the sidewalk or all the way up in the sidewalk. Whereas if they went back four feet on their property from the sidewalk and planted this, it would not be an issue. Because when the road, when we have to take, maintain the sidewalk or whatever you have to do, it's, it's not an issue. But everybody wants to encroach, is fire out into the right-of-way that they can get. And then when we come along and take this down, we have some upset people. Because we have to do, what we have to do to keep the people safe.
Mike.
So, um, when a homeowner has a existing hedge that's right next to the sidewalk, whether or not they know where the survey edge of their property is, the sidewalk being the public domain, you have the right to go down there with some sort of chopper and a line.
Boom, yes.
This is town line, that's your property. They can't really complain about the part cut off of their shrubbery that has grown out into the public way, is my understanding. Back when I was upset, so it's not even like you have to notify them, it would be nice if they came out and maintained it themselves, but for everybody else, and this is maybe why many people walk on the sidewalk for so far, then they walk in the street, then they get back in the sidewalk.
Hundred percent.
They're going around the bushes that are growing out.
Mike, you know what, one of my biggest pet peeves that I've seen since I've been doing this job is everybody is standing in their windows taking pictures of me.
Oh, he's pretty.
Take the pictures, I'll be doing the work that I'm doing and then.
Where those pictures are appearing is what you should be.
Then, then they get on the phone and call the town office and start complaining. Come up and talk to me.
Exactly.
Let's come to, let's come to a reasonable solution in how to take care of this. And I mean, it, it works both ways.
You don't have the right to plant a shrub next to the public way and allow it to block the public way.
And then call and say, I want to come back.
And complain about it.
You know, I met, I met a gentleman down on Dover Memorial Street today, he called, wanted, wanted some clarification on, on the project down there. You know, I met a, I met a gentleman down on Dooley Mall, which we today. He called, wanted, wanted some clarification on, on the project down there. I went down, I met with him. He, he talked everything over. He was happy with what, what he could heard and what we're going to do and. And thank, thank you for coming down. That's all it takes.
Great.
So I mean, it's to the point, you know, it's not to the point that they're all bad, but I guess you don't know until you get there either, how it's going to work.
So I'd like to go back to my conflict though, because you could, this could be its own proof from May until late September. You're not going to keep up with it.
We had some, some owners that was weed whacking the town back in the day. There, there was that Nick. He came and weed whacked all, all through town.
Yeah.
This stuff is growing.
What, what she, what she moved was not by a sidewalk, it was by that blue house there on the corner where you pull out from Pleasant going.
Mm-hmm.
Going where you can't see and that's not even a sidewalk. So I guess her question was where does the right-of-way go within her property when there's not a sidewalk?
So back on the, back on the striking, I don't want to reel this guy in, but, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I, if that, if you figure you had the time to do it and this is the time you'd like to do it, I'd go along.
Well, rega.
But I'm only twenty percent.
Regardless, Mark, it doesn't matter. We're going to have to come in way before daylight to do it because it takes time to do it.
And there's still going to be people there at some point in time in May or December.
Oh, I mean, no matter what, we got to come in at two, one, two o'clock in the morning.
Three weeks from now. I, I was not, I'm not going to vote to do it in August, you guys can, but I'm going to.
Well, we, we're going to have to, but.
No, I mean, I, we, we can work.
Yeah, we do have to take the vote because there's a disagreement within the board. Nancy?
Um, I just, the two points. I, um, also lived in places where we shoveled the sidewalk and we cut the grass.
Right.
But there was an ordinance.
What's it?
That stated the sidewalk responsibility. You have twenty-four hours to remove snow.
Property owners. Yeah.
It becomes the other question of if you were to do something like that, who's enforcing it with everything? But we don't have an ordinance, so that's beside the point. And I have to agree that, um, I think trying to clear parking down there for the next three or four weeks overnight is just going to be a complication for the businesses in that perhaps a striker should wait till after Labor Day.
I just have a question about it. Okay, so you got Water Street Tavern on there. Right, that does not have its own parking, but they rent rooms, right? Do they rent rooms on Mondays and Tuesdays?
Well, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Because I know.
They're totally full. Everybody's full.
I know the restaurant isn't open, but they're talking about people, you know, elderly people needing, uh, their cars closed, but if they need them that close to staying at Water Street Tavern, I mean, they got stairs and they search their sidewalks, but that's kind of moot there.
No, but I think, I think the, the point is. I think the point is this time, this time, this time of year, if you walk, there are cars parked there overnight.
Well, there's no one like going in both landing either.
No, I agree with that.
Whether they're in the B and B, whether they're in the, one of the Airbnb that they're renting, or whether they're in Cow Hills, whether they're in, there are cars. They are overnight this time of year and trying to get them all removed successfully one night is probably going to be a bigger headache than just waiting until after Labor Day.
Well, yeah, I, I was just wondering, because I was like, maybe do it on Monday or Tuesday, if they're not renting rooms, but if they are.
Yeah, right. There isn't a room to be had in.
No.